Good evening, I'm Tricia Keen. I'm running for City Council District 2. So first off, we all need to vote in March and again in November to throw the climate denier out of the White House because our future depends on it.[18.64][18.64](APPLAUSE). Second, as a council member, I would focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation, as you've heard, makes up 40% of the GHG emissions in California. And even as car ownership is going up, going down, vehicle miles traveled are going up. So I would work to get housing closer to jobs and create options to get people out of their vehicles. The other thing we obviously need to focus on is securing our city against prolonged drought. We did a lot, we've done a lot, we can't backslide. So I would increase groundwater and stormwater capture, the use of recycled water, and work with our neighboring cities to achieve better local water independence. But more importantly than all of this is the framework that we should look at this in, and that is through these lens of innovation and really taking advantage of the fact that we've got some of the best and the brightest in the city here, and we should really work with them to achieve what we need to, to have a resilient Pasadena. Thank you.[77.25][77.25](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Kevin Litwin. I'm also running for District 2. And I think my vision for a climate resilient city is, you know, I close my eyes and I see like this futuristic, everybody's doing everything the right way and the right thing, and the education process is always about then letting people, you know, making sure they're recycling, making sure they're using alternate vehicles and fuels and all that good stuff like that, solar panels on the roof. That would be my vision. How do we get there? I think that's gonna be a whole nother challenge. But that would be my vision.[116.61][116.61](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Felicia Williams. It's great to see a lot of familiar faces in the audience. I have been working on environmental policy in Pasadena for more than 10 years. That's why I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club and the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters. I'm running for City Council in District 2. My vision for Pasadena is to bring our environmental commitment back to the City Council and go back to a lot of the strength and the drive that we had previously when I was on the Environmental Commission. So my wish list is to amend the Climate Action Plan to make it a lot stronger and have a lot of teeth. Have an organization that oversees it through the City Manager's Office so that there's coordination between the departments. One, bring back the annual Earth Day Festival. People really love that. It's a way to educate people and get people involved. Two, we need to look at banning leaf blowers. We're starting to do that, we need to do that. Three, we need to amend the tree ordinance to protect our trees. And lastly, all of our EV chargers, I did drive here in an EV, all of our EV chargers should be tied to battery storage and energy management systems. Thanks.[190.68][190.68](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Charbland, and I'm a candidate for City Council District 4. And I'm so proud of you for putting this forum together. You are our tomorrow, and it's important that we make sure that we have everything in order for you when you get to our ages. So that's exciting. I am running for City Council on environmental justice because I'm concerned about the environment in which I live in, and there's a number of things that are happening. One of the things that I looked at was really the City of Pasadena's Climate Action Plan. And one thing I want to do as the councilperson is make sure that we endorse that plan, that we are involved in that plan, and that we are plowed in that plan at all levels, that we make sure that all entities and collaborations are in that plan. So basically, the Pasadena environmental sustainable practices, for example, the green building ordinance, we adopted that plan. We were one of the first municipalities to adopt that plan when it was put into place. The City of Pasadena will continue to take steps to reduce the GHG emissions and promote environmental sustainability practices by establishing goals and policies, also collaborating with organizations like the Sierra Club to strengthen.[270.64][270.64](APPLAUSE).
Thanks for hosting. I'm gonna talk faster than normal to make sure that I make it in time. What could be more important than this, right? The environment. A typical PWP customer is taxed $44 per year on the underground power line program. Pasadena estimates it's going to take 400 years to complete putting the power lines underground. I would like to see that energy directed elsewhere. I would like us to get off the grid. Pasadena, the first mid-sized city in the United States to be essentially solar-powered. Solar technology, solar technology will have to advance, but we have plenty of sunshine. My vision for a climate resilient Pasadena has more or less eliminated the use of fossil fuels in our homes and cars. First, we have to get PWP's permission to get off the grid because right now we're not allowed. Then we have to redirect underground power line program. Let's talk about water. Any new construction, increased density development should be tiered to water. There's an unfortunate trend in my neighborhood to cut down trees and pave over the backyard. It's called hardscape. So to recap, direct our underground, well, I'm out of time. Thank you. Kevin Wheeler, District 4.
Hi, my name is Ryan Bell. I'm running for City Council in District 6, and it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. And I just want to thank again the students and everyone for putting this together and for the Jackie Robinson Park for hosting us.[361.28][361.28](APPLAUSE). I want to say that I'm reinvigorated in the climate discussion since the emergence of the Sunrise Movement and the Green New Deal conversation nationally and at the state level. Because in the past, when I was your age, the climate conversation was about plants and saving animals and trees, and all of that is still super important. But I think what we're discovering now is that there are two ways to be a climate denier. One way is to deny the science. The other way is to deny that we need to be doing anything about it. And I think you can believe in the science all you want, and if you're not taking the steps and the actions to mitigate the crisis, you're essentially a climate denier as well. And so my vision here is, as many others have said, it's interlocked. What's beautiful about the Green New Deal concept is that it brings together housing policy, transportation policy, alternate modes of transportation, preserving water and energizing our commitment to our climate. So I'm totally, yeah, thank you.[429.62][429.62](APPLAUSE).
Hi, I'm Tamerlin Godley, and I'm running for Pasadena City Council District 6. Thank you for being here, for your commitment to Pasadena and to what is an existential issue for our planet. So the question is about climate resiliency. And of course, we need to be planning for the harms that are being predicted at this time. As a city council, we need to make sure that we are ready for these catastrophic wildfires, that we are changing building materials, that we are rigorous in making sure that we're clearing brush, that we know where our most senior folks are so we can help them in times of emergency. All those things, we need to be ready, and we need to do that as a city council. But I hope we're more than that. I hope we're leaders on reducing carbon emissions, establishing wise water infrastructure and uses, and reducing waste. And that, we need to be a visionary city council that leads on these important issues.[495.56][495.56](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. I'm Steve Madison, and I think I'm the only incumbent city council member here on the dais. So it's great to be here with you tonight. And I think unlike my two opponents, I actually have a record for you to judge. I was the author and the sponsor of things like Pasadena's Agreement to the Green Cities Declaration and the United Nations Accord. You know, we have a special responsibility here in Pasadena. We're a leader. We have institutions like JPL and Caltech and the Carnegie Observatories who are studying climate change, and we need to work closer with them. I drove one of my two electric car cars here tonight, by the way. That'd be a good question to ask everybody on the dais. I'd like to see us continue to push harder to lower emissions and achieve the goals of our Climate Action Plan, and the annual report can be found on the website, and I urge all of you to study it and go to an Environmental Advisory Commission meeting. We're committed to this. Thank you.[564.75][564.75](APPLAUSE).
Thank you to all the candidates for these great opening statements. We're gonna move into the verbal response questions, and as a reminder, it's one minute per candidate, maximum five minutes per question. So the first question is, many students in Pasadena either drive themselves to school or their parents drive them, which pressures families to own a car. The PUSD, unlike many other school districts, doesn't have designated public transportation. And Pasadena's bus system was free from 1994 to 2003. So would you support making Pasadena transit and other public transportation fare-free to encourage ridership? Felicia?
Sure, absolutely. And I don't know if you know, but Chris Holden authored a bill to try to do that statewide. It did not pass last year, so we really need to support him in getting this statewide. This is really key, especially when you have almost 20% of students at PCC who are homeless. They need assistance. We have kids in PUSD, they also need assistance. But what I would add to this is I would make those buses electric so that their lungs are not inhaling the fumes when they stand behind them. Thank you.[633.82][633.82](APPLAUSE).
First, we're gonna give the opportunity to other candidates in District 2.
So yes, I would also absolutely and unequivocally support making transit fare-free. But I also think we need to increase transit frequency to make it more realistic that it can serve the purpose that we need it to serve, which is to give people real options to get out of their cars and choose not to use a car and to get around without needing to increase our GHG emissions.[664.04][664.04](APPLAUSE).
I think this is pretty easy, and I can make it real quick. Yes, absolutely, students should be able to ride for free.
Madison, would you like to respond?
Sure. And not only is my answer yes, but I actually already did it. I proposed to my colleagues on the City Council and the city staff some weeks ago, and then literally last night, I renewed my request that we go to zero fare for Pasadena local transit. And let me share with you, because this will, I think, shed some light on the different dimensions of decisions like this. The City Manager's response was, well, you know, you can buy a monthly pass for $10. So it's de minimis. And I said, yeah, but that means the revenue that we're getting from it is de minimis also, and so we should do it. Because symbolically and in every other way, it's important that we make this stand. Thank you.[720.54][720.54](APPLAUSE).
Ryan Bell?
This is something I definitely agree with Mr. Madison about. I think that not only should public transportation be free for students, it should be free for everyone. It's a public service. It should be a right to move around the city without having to pollute the air, and we should, I also agree with Tricia, that it should be more frequent.
We're gonna give it to Tamerlin.
So I definitely agree with that. I think the bigger concern I have is how can we incentivize more people to use mass transit? What are the barriers? Let's understand that, because just making it free may not be enough. Sometimes we do things we think are gonna incentivize people, but it actually doesn't have the impact that we hope for. So we need to understand people, the populations that are most likely to use buses, and then go to them and figure out what are the barriers that are keeping them from buses, and then have solutions and incentives that address those barriers.
Would you like to answer, Charlotte?
So I live in District 4, and I live next to Pasadena High School. So on a daily basis, I see hundreds of students that are at the bus stops. And my heart goes out to them because I know that there's all economical levels that are going to school there, and I absolutely think that there should be no cost for them to ride that bus. It may not have been their choice for them to have to go to that school, and so for that reason alone. The other thing is, we need to have more community schooling, get people out of their cars so they can walk to school like they did when I was a kid. So those types of things really make sense for me in doing those types of things. Also, you know, just being able to have a bike lane for them to get to school and those types of things where the kids can just, because they're missing that. They're missing that whole community process as well. So yes.
And would you like to respond, Candidate Wheeler?
Yes, thank you, Ozzy. One more thing to add on this in my own adventures of traveling through public transportation. The bus drivers sometimes will just stop and pull over and then just go and walk out of the bus and leave the bus with no explanation to anybody ever, like, hey, where'd you go? Or how soon are you gonna be back or anything like that? So there needs to be a little bit more accountability from the drivers. So at least offer us an explanation and also stay on track with the schedule so I know when I can, so I can be responsible and I can show up at a place on time when I'm supposed to. Thank you.[870.00][870.00](APPLAUSE).
Scientific evidence shows that single-family zoning produces more emissions than dancer multi-family zoning. This, of course, is an uncomfortable fact for Pasadena, which has a strong political identity as a single-family zoning community. How would you, as an elected official, listen to the science in promoting dancer multi-family housing?
Who wants to take that one first?
Why not? So I think the answer is that we do need to encourage multi-family housing in places that make sense, and one of those places is very clearly near our high-quality transit stops. There is a lot of data connecting transit usage and low-income housing or affordable housing. So if we're including affordable housing at our train stops and we're making it easy for people who are in those units to access mass transit, that is the kind of connection that we should be promoting. I think what we should not focus on is treating this question like it's a zero-sum game because we can have options in the city that allow for all housing types to exist. But I think we do need to be mindful of making sure that we're proposing multi-family housing in a way that's going to achieve the goals that we would like it to achieve.[953.26][953.26](APPLAUSE).
Are there any other District 2 candidates that would like to respond?
I think I'm getting off easy because I'm not giving like great, big, long answers because for this one, it's the same, I mean, I would look at it objectively. When something like this is presented in front of me and says, how would you, as an elected official, listen to the science promoting this? Well, I'm gonna look at it objectively. Quite frankly, I'm not 100% sure if that's accurate or not. I don't know. But I can be convinced. So when you're presenting all this stuff in front of me on a city council and I'm looking at all those options, I believe we need more density, especially around these transit stations and places where it's already logged on to build. But that's my answer, just objectively, with everything I would look at.
Hi, so I believe in a mix of housing types as well for different types of people. People want different types of housing. What I would support is oriented development that actually links to transit. What we have now is we have oriented development, which is just, there's nothing connecting it to transit. So if a developer is going to build transit-oriented development, they need to connect it to the gold line. They need to give all of the residents free passes to the gold line. They actually need to make sure that it is tied to transit. The other concern that I have is our trees. We are losing 2% to 3% of our green space every year because of new development. So we have to do this in a balanced way that keeps our trees so we can breathe, and we also have the emotional benefits of greenery. Thank you.
I saw Councilmember Madison down there, so we'll go to District 6 for some responses.
Well, I think, first of all, in my district in West Pasadena, we do have beautiful single-family home neighborhoods as well. And I think we are committed to preserving those. I live in a single-family home. I have an ADU that a student lives in. He happens to be my son. I have artificial turf throughout the whole property. So there are things we can do with single-family to mitigate the impacts that you're talking about. We have built a tremendous amount of multi-family housing in Pasadena of late, and a lot of it's been transit-oriented, a lot of it has been affordable housing. Just last summer, I co-sponsored the amendment to the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance to increase the requirement that all new development have 20% now of affordable housing. So definitely, we need multi-family housing, and we're going to have more. And I agree that transit-oriented zoning is important. I will also tell you, though, there are pitfalls here. For example, we run a water and power at Pasadena, Pasadena Water and Power. They tell us that with multi-family, there is not the capacity to have everyone have an electric car, and that'll be a problem we'll have to tackle.
Thank you. Is there any other District 6 candidates that would like to respond?
Yeah, I think this question often gets presented as if there's sort of an existential crisis facing our single-family neighborhoods, like if we increase the density or if we increase the inclusionary zoning percentage, or if we talk about transit-oriented development, that somehow we're just gonna bulldoze, you know, southwest Pasadena and put up high-rise apartments. And I don't, that's not, I don't think what anybody's talking about, but it's used as a political bludgeon to kind of beat down the concept. And so I definitely think we need to ignore that and not panic about ADUs and panic about multi-family housing. We have lots of multi-family housing, as Steve has said, but we're building way too much market-rate housing that people can't afford, and we're not building enough affordable housing. And so we need to do that around the transit stops.[1187.08][1187.08](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Candidate Godley, did you have any response?
So I think that what's really important here is thinking about our carbon footprint and what are all the variety of ways that we can be thinking. My daughter is at Penn State. She leads a group called Awake State at Penn State that is focused on environmental sustainability there. And when she came home for summer, she was on us about our carbon footprint, and we need for each of us to be thinking about that. You know, when we talked about multi-family zones, we also need to think about trees. As Felicia said, that is super important, that we have that carbon recapture through our trees. So we need to think of our overall goal and how we get there and have choices for how people get there, but everyone's responsible for this. We all have to be working toward this goal.
Thank you. Next question. As a resident of Pasadena, I still see polystyrene materials, that's your styrofoam, materials used in Pasadena restaurants, even though a polystyrene ordinance or slash ban was passed in July 2016. Is or should there be an established office that specifically enforces environmental ordinances, such as the polystyrene ban passed by the City Council?
Since we didn't get to District 6 or District 4, we'll give District 4 candidates a chance to respond first.
Is it or should there be an established office that specifically enforces environmental ordinance? I absolutely think yes. And here's why. I believe that they put the plastic bag ordinance in place, and it's making a difference, especially around our oceans in the Santa Monica area. And it's really raising a consciousness for us when we have those plastic bags that won't decompose for years and years to come. So an ordinance in place would actually put people on notice that they need to do something about that. What I see happening as well is, I'm a plastic bottle collector. We do use them. I collect them and I take them to the local recycle area. I'm not sure what's happening with Pasadena, but they're going away way too many. It's hard to find, very hard to find a recycling area to do that. And I think that if you want to promote that, you have to put those systems in place for people to use them. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with Char on all of that.
Okay. Councilmember Madison?
You know, I yield to no one in my belief that we have to be committed to environmental policy and being a green city. I was one of the proponents of the Environmental Advisory Commission that I know has been talked about here tonight. I'm not sure that we need a new office. We have already a code enforcement presence in Pasadena, and that's where that currently resides, with the City Attorney's Office. So there's sort of an escalation that occurs if there are violations. Code enforcement is well aware of these ordinances and enforces them, and then the City Attorney ultimately can take those cases to court if that's required. So I'm not sure without hearing more that I would support establishing a new office. I'd rather use those resources perhaps to do other things that we want to do to be a greener city.
Okay. Are there any other District 6 candidates that would like to respond?
I agree with Steve on that. We want to be very careful about our city resources and use them where they're most needed, and if there is someone that's enforcing this and getting it done, then we should stick with that. So I agree with Steve.
Yeah, I agree that the key part of this question for me is the enforcement, and if it's not being enforced, it needs to be enforced. And I think furthermore, we should talk about a plastic, single-use plastic ban on top of this and enforce that too. And it's not that hard. And I think part of this challenge that we face environmentally is changing behaviors. And I'll be the first to say that my behavior doesn't change easily, especially, you know, after 40-something years of habits that form. But when the plastic bag ban went into place, guess what? I didn't use any more plastic bags, and I started to remember my reusable bags much more often. And now I don't have to even think about it. I just open my trunk and I get my single-use bags out. So we can change our behavior, but sometimes we need a little enforcement.
Sure. Yes.
Is this on? Do you want to give a short? Okay. Citizen Service App, you take a picture with your phone, you send it in, and they'll send code enforcement out. Please do it.[1467.07][1467.07](APPLAUSE).
Any other District 2 candidates that would like to respond?
Hello. So we're talking about environmental police. That's what we're thinking. We're having a hard time enforcing speed limits around here, let alone environmental police. The way this is gonna get resolved, though, is through us and through education and those practices like that. So it's similar to like smoking, right? You can't ban smoking, but what you can do is definitely put out great programs and tell people that it's gonna kill you and all that good stuff like that. We're doing that now. We're saying if we keep on this track, that the world is gonna destroy itself in 12 years. A lot of people think the world's gonna be over in 12 years. Well, good, that's a good start, because I don't think it's gonna be over in 12 years either. So it's definitely all in the education. To have an environmental police, that would be a waste of money.
Thank you. Should we have an office that enforces? Yes. But should we use that as an opportunity to think a heck of a lot bigger? Absolutely. This could be an opportunity to have an office that helps us set policy, think strategically, look at innovative options, do things like consider whether we should be a carbon-neutral city. So this is not, we shouldn't think that narrowly. This should be an opportunity to think much, much bigger.
Thank you. And now we'll begin our innovative yes/no question round that was so enjoyed by the previous.[1561.38][1561.38](LAUGHTER). So it looks like people are more excited about this one on this one. So we'll go ahead and start with Edgar.
Number one, is the climate crisis your number one priority, yes or no? Have to choose.[1577.97][1577.97](LAUGHTER).
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. If elected, would you support declaring a climate emergency and considering the climate crisis in every decision you and council would make?[1589.01][1589.01](APPLAUSE).
All right, next question. Some cities have enacted, oh, deeply sorry.
If elected, would you push for better coverage of the climate crisis in the PUSD K-12 curriculum?[1613.23][1613.23](APPLAUSE).
Some cities have enacted their own local Green New Deals. Seattle's plan making public transportation free. New York's plan requires tens of thousands of buildings to be retrofitted to reduce climate pollution. Should Pasadena enact its own Green New Deal?[1634.01][1634.01](APPLAUSE).
In 2011, the city adopted a zero-waste strategic plan aiming to divert at least 87% of waste from landfills by 2035. Only 9% of all plastics recycled are recycled in California. The question is, do you support a ban on single-use plastic footwear in the city?[1658.36][1658.36](APPLAUSE).
Okay. In 2009, the city found that 20% of municipal emissions came from buildings and facilities, and 16% of community emissions came from residences. To decarbonize buildings, a growing number of California cities are requiring that new buildings be fully electric. Would you support a 100% electric requirement for all new construction in the city?
Many cities have a sustainability officer who oversees the operation are done in a great way. Pasadena eliminated a similar position almost a decade ago during the financial crisis. Now that Pasadena's fiscal situation is more stable, should the city make the hiring of a chief sustainability officer a priority?[1734.41][1734.41](APPLAUSE).
The average cost of a new electric car remains beyond the reach for many Pasadena residents. Currently, the city's PWP EV rebate program offers up to $1,500, but that only applies to vehicles approved for highway application. One of the guiding principles of the city, however, is for it to be a community where people can circulate without a car. Would you support amending the rebate program to include more affordable options, such as the electric pedal assist bicycles and other electric-powered mobility devices?[1776.73][1776.73](APPLAUSE).
A 2003 study found that green roofs, roofs with plants and algae that reduce urban heating absorb stormwater, increase biodiversity and improve air quality, reduce the daily energy demand for air conditioning in the summer by over 75%. energy demand for air conditioning in the summer by over 75%. Do you support the city requiring green roofs on the new construction?
Okay, we're now done with the yes or no questions. Thank you. Okay, the next question is one that you may have heard earlier. In January, Mayor Tornick said that the youth can't understand the difficulties in transitioning to 100% renewable energy because of the costs, saying to me, "You don't pay the electricity bills at your house." However, again, a 2019 study found that 75% of U.S. coal production is more expensive than renewable energy such as wind and solar. Do you think the financial cost of transitioning to 100% renewable energy should guide our decision? And how can renters voice their opinions if they would like to switch to renewable energy? I'm going to go with Felicia, and then we'll get to District Six.
Okay. So first of all, Pasadena Water and Power is looking at 100% renewable option for people to opt into. If you have not selected green power, you need to go home and do it now. We have that option in water and power, and that accelerates our ability to go to renewable energy sooner than 2045, which is the state's deadline and the deadline that we have for 100% renewable. The issue is, I sat on the Integrated Resource Plan for the city, and what we asked the residents is, would you be able to tolerate more than a 10% increase in your bill to go to renewables faster? And what we heard from the public was that they would not. So that is why we still have our policy. It's very difficult to get out of the coal contract because whether we take the power or not, we still have to pay for it. So if you think about it, if we go to renewables, we will have to pay for power twice. And that burdens our low-income residents, and they already have trouble staying in the city, and I want to keep them in the city, especially our PUSD students. So I support the current path to 2045. Thanks.
Would any other District Two candidates like to answer?
I'll say something real quick. I think this is between you and the mayor. There's something going on there, man. But I got to tell you what, I mean, I'm pretty sure you got a good grasp of what's going on, right? You did all this, so this is a good job for you, so.
I don't know how to follow that. I do, I do think as a framework for establishing good policy, we should first figure out what the right policy is and not let the cost be the determinator of what that policy is. However, we do need to figure out how to implement that policy. And so if cost is a factor for being able to roll out 100% renewable as soon as we would all like to, I think we need to figure out a way to solve for that cost issue. It could be by delaying rolling out 100% renewable. It could be by finding ways to subsidize the bills of the people who cannot afford to absorb that cost. And I think that's something that is probably a lower cost for us and achieves a greater good and something that we should give strong consideration to.
Madison, did you want to answer?
Yes, I think, well, first of all, we already do have subsidies for low-income people. But that is really the issue here, is that it is more costly presently to have renewable energy. And I checked that box that Felicia mentioned on my power bill, and we're all, financially, if you're able to, I encourage you to do that as well. In terms of the second part of the question, there is a strong voice at City Hall for renters and affordable housing advocates. And I think I would encourage all of you to get more involved. I just got to say, it's been great to have the Sequoia students come to council these recent weeks and speak out. And believe me, we listen to you. So thank you.
So I think we need to get to renewables as quickly as we can. I can't imagine that 2045 is the right date for that. It has to be much quicker than that. But things are changing. And yes, we have to be very cognizant of the impact of this on folks that are already struggling to meet the costs of living in the city. But we need to be thinking about this at every turn as technology increases, how we deal with our contracts. And it has got to be quicker than 2045. How we get there, I'm not certain, but we've got to move as quickly as we can.
See, I agree with Tamerlin that 2045 is not nearly quick enough. We need to be, you know, all the experts are saying we need to be there by 2030, which is a lot sooner. That's not a little bit of time. That's 15 years, you know, 15 years is a long time. And so it's going to be hard, and there's going to be sacrifices along the way. And as already been pointed out, the consequences of climate change fall most immediately upon the poorest members of our community. In the previous forum with the mayoral candidates, it was pointed out that seniors and low-income individuals don't have the resources to shelter themselves from the effects of climate change in terms of being cool or warm, as the case may be. And so I think personal choice is probably a good start, maybe 20 years ago when we were first getting into this. But to put the burden of this transition on the back of personal choice, I think, is the wrong path. And we need to make it affordable for everyone.
Would you like to respond? Yeah.
I absolutely agree with Ryan as well on that. I think the transitioning sooner rather than later is the way to go. I think coal needs to be out of the option totally. I'm from Pittsburgh, and so I come from a coal town, and I've seen the results of that in our city, the major diseases that's come from that. So, you know, 2025, 2030 is just way too far away for us to transition for that. I think financially, there's other options out there. We can look at federally funding. We can look at grants. We could look at collaborating with other cities to get that money in here. And yes, affordability is a huge factor because I know that there are people now that are just struggling to just take care of, you know, the high air conditioning that happens when we get 110 degrees. And sometimes they suffer because they just go in the heat. And of course, there's health issues that result of that. So I believe that we can transition sooner rather than later, and that it shouldn't be a matter of the 100%. Okay.
Just very quickly, though, that first part of that question, do you think the financial cost of transitioning to 100% renewable energy should guide our decision? Of course, that has to be in our minds all the time, otherwise we're going to be taken advantage of it. Somebody says, "I don't care what the cost is. We've got to do this, and we've got to do that." Somebody's going to be like, "Oh, okay, well, then double for you." So just common sense, like we're going to, of course, we're going to find the best and the cheapest way to do it and the most efficient. But with that said, of course, it's super important that we get into non-polluting energy as fast as we can and get away from fossil fuels. Technology.
Next question. Cars are the biggest sources of greenhouse gases emission in California. If we don't reduce vehicle miles traveled, we won't meet our climate goals. Some cities are making progress cutting back these emissions by designing communities that are more walkable, bikeable, and have more public transit options. Pasadena isn't one of them. Pedestrian deaths and injuries are rising, so people are free to walk. Some people who drive don't think a reduction in driving is possible. What actions would you take to give all people access to convenient, affordable, and green mobility options?
We'll start with Councilmember Madison.
Thank you. Well, this is a good opportunity maybe to talk about a really exciting opportunity we have in Pasadena. We killed the 710 freeway. And you want to talk about an environmental danger and a hazard that we were able to ultimately avoid, and I was proud to work with many of you to do that. Now we're going to have this incredible opportunity to take back the, what we call the freeway stump, that 50 acres. Those of you that went to Sequoia or are parents of Sequoia in the lower school know exactly what I'm talking about because Sequoia is right there. And this is the kind of question that we're going to be examining closely as we move forward, imagining, visioning, and then developing the plans for that 50-acre stump. It's incredibly exciting for the city. And I want that stump to be a model in many ways, but certainly sustainability is one of them. And we'll be able to actually build in the infrastructure as we hopefully fill in the ditch and create a whole new community there. It's something we'll all be really excited and proud to be a part of.
You mentioned the 710. There is funding that was let, that was released as a result of us not spending the money on the 710. Recently, we did hear that the city has chosen to spend that money on one project, which is the undergrounding, right? But there were opportunities, other cities that had 710 corridor money did have opportunities to spend it on more multimodal transportation options. As the only incumbent, I will give you kind of a chance to respond and maybe weigh in on that.
It's actually not the city or other cities spending that money. These are metro projects. What they have is a tremendous amount of money now that they're not going to build the 710 extension. But certainly, the city does have a major role in weighing in and advocating for what we want in our city. And I would say the short answer is we're going to do both. We're going to try to take that gold line either below or above grade at California because it does create tremendous traffic jams. But we're also going to look at more multimodal, like more bus lanes, more complete streets. We've done two in my district, and some other exciting transportation projects.
Any other District Six candidates?
I think that it is really important to create neighborhoods around which people can walk. So I was walking door-to-door this past two weekends in the area that is kind of Colorado to California, between Marengo and over to Madison. And in that area, a lot of people walk and talk to me about walking and how much they enjoy having a walking environment there, going to Trader Joe's, going to Old Town. So we need to be thinking about how we create neighborhoods when we're building senior housing that are close to conveniences, close to healthcare. How can we create neighborhoods where people are actually going to be walking in them? And as we think of other types of mobility, so we had the bikes, the bike share. That didn't work. We need to understand why. We need to understand, again, instead of coming up with solutions that we think will work, we need to go to the people who are going to use this, figure out barriers, figure out incentives, and actually do things that people will use.
So this sort of comes for me back to changing habits and behaviors again. And I drive entirely too much. I'll be the first to admit that. And I would like to not do that. And my partner and I talk about whether it's safe for us where we live to take our bikes down California where there's no shoulder and there's no, we can't really, we're not supposed to ride on the sidewalk because there's people walking on the sidewalk. So I think we need to really look at these micro-mobility lanes more everywhere, where they're protected lanes that are separated from cars, where people can ride their bikes safely. And it's also recently come to my attention that there's a ban on electric scooters. I was just shopping on Amazon for an electric scooter. I also think there's ways that we can protect pedestrians. I mean, one of my big pet peeves is people who drive up to a red light and go right through the crosswalk as if the front line of the crosswalk is the place to stop. And I'm not sure what the enforcement mechanism is for that, but I would love to see people being prevented from doing that. And maybe some right turn on red prohibitions, you know? I think we need to stop that.
Lots of people would love to hear you continue that line of thought, but we are out of time. We do want to give other folks a chance to respond. District Two?
To address the vehicle mile traveled portion of the comment, I think we need to have better jobs housing balance because that really does have a direct impact on reducing the distance you need to travel in order to get to work and to get your needs met. But the other thing that we need to do is give people better options, make it easier to choose to use transit. That's, there's a really simple solution to that. Make transit service more frequent. That is one of the biggest barriers to accessing transit. I take the gold line every day to work, and that is a great system. It works really well. Getting to the gold line is not as pleasant as it could be. Something as simple as more street trees and a more pleasant walk to the gold line so that you have shaded streets so that you can access transit without having to get into a car to access transit. And the other thing is we, Metro, right now, LA Metro is in the middle of the next-gen plan. This is an opportunity for Pasadena Transit to coordinate with Metro to increase and make our service more frequent and possibly to take over some of their underperforming lines so that we can operate them better. So we should take advantage of that opportunity right now.
Well, I think we already kind of addressed it and said, hey, students should be able to ride for free. But I want you all to think about this, you know, because I don't have an answer to this behind me. On the weekdays, I commute, and most of the people in my neighborhood commute. And then when you're coming home, you're hitting the grocery store, you're hitting a couple of other stops and whatever like that. And then it comes down to time. This lady's going to flash a card in front of me. On my weekends, I want to do a lot of stuff. That's the freedom, the beauty of America. And the only way I can do that right now is with my car and the transportation that I have at my availability. So there's no easy answer to that behind me, except for the fact I'll start and I'll concede and I'll say, yeah, sure, students need to be able to get for free. But everything else, I want that freedom to move about. And so bring in the other cars, and I'm not a big fan, actually, of electric, but I am of hydrogen. I'd love to see more hydrogen.
So for those of you who know me, you know that I used to be a bike commuter, and I used to ride 75 to 100 miles a week on my bike. And then I ended up getting lung damage, and it turns out I just have a sunburn on the inside of my lungs because of particulate matter. So my consolation prize is my electric vehicle. I don't like it as much as biking, but I get it. I totally get it. So we have a bike transportation plan. We need to get more funding to finish it and connect the bike route so that every, you're not sort of on Colorado Boulevard for two blocks just to get to another bike lane. So let's connect all of the bike network within the city so people can get around. Secondly, when we have new development, again, the developer should be paying for these improvements. If you go to, there's a very big single-family development in Glendora, and the developer had to dedicate an entire easement, so there was a bike lane. You can go and ride it. It's a great ride out to Glendora Mountain Road. But there was an entire bike way that goes behind it, and the developer paid for all of that. That should be a requirement.
So I live in East Pasadena, and the Gold Line Sierra Madre is my backyard, pretty much. And if you've ever stopped under that freeway and put your window down, you'll put it up very quickly because you can't breathe. I have a son and a granddaughter who has severe asthma, and it's important that we have clean air. So with that being the case, in District Four, we need to find some alternatives because there's a lot of traffic and a lot of cars that park there. And so we need to find a way to get out of our cars. And the one way to do that is create safe bike lanes, lanes that people can ride in safely and make sure they're common sense areas in which they're put in. The other thing is that, this is kind of a far-fetched idea, but I have family who live in Washington, D.C. And they work in an area, they walk out to a main area, and they get in a car with somebody that they really don't know. And I know that doesn't sound safe, but it's been proven for the last 20 years. I see you smiling, and they go until they go to the next stop, which might be 10 or 15 miles away. But that's the way that they've found to reduce traffic. When I think of 5,000 cars that come on and off of that 210 freeway in Pasadena, we have to look at alternative ways and an open mind to what to do with that. Thank you.
Okay, so piggybacking off of far-fetched ideas, I want to talk about in East Pasadena, District Four, we have this transportation corridor, and so we got all this new development right up against the gold line. But the thing is, for every one of those units, they're expensive, they're not affordable housing, and there's three parking spaces for every single one of them. So it's like, oh, yeah, well, we'll build next to the gold line. But it's really just an excuse to build more high-end units. So what if, making it affordable, these were one or no unit, there was no parking, or there was only parking for one car? Because it would be cheaper because not as many people would want it. And then, secondly, people would move on when they want to do something else because they're going to want more cars. But that, this idea of this walkable village that they're selling in East Pasadena, it's disingenuous. There's way more traffic there right now on Foothill and Sierra Madre Villa. And something where if we were having those units and there weren't people with cars, they would use, those would be people that would want the gold line. Thanks.
Next question. Many candidates have said we need attainable, not aspirational, goals for Pasadena. However, these attainable goals, such as those laid out in the Pasadena Climate Action Plan, where performance indicators are as vague as, quote, "reduce emissions from construction vehicles by 2020 and 2035," unquote, are these attainable goals only attainable because there's no accountability in them?
Yeah, I read through the Climate Action Plan again today, all the way through. And you're right, it's super vague, and they're not aggressive enough. And also, I mean, like, for example, we have, one of our biggest carbon emissions is cars. And so our main plan is getting people on bicycles. That's not enough to be thinking about this, you know? I mean, and I love bicycles, that's great, but here I am in this dress with these shoes. I'm not going to be on a bicycle when there are a lot of places I need to go. So I think we need to be much more thoughtful, aggressive, with real goals that are measurable. And the city council is on top of it every moment. It's critical. And we're, the city council is on top of it every moment. It's critical. I don't think this goes far enough in any event.
Yeah, I think it's always, you know, much easier to put out, you know, a plan without any sort of teeth in it, without any accountability or any sort of enforcement mechanisms. So absolutely, you know, I'm not privy, as the person who hasn't been the incumbent for 20 years, I'm not privy to exactly all the ways that this has been unenforced. But I do think that the enforcement piece is vitally important, and I think we need to strengthen that plan furthermore so that it's got more aggressive goals. I'm a huge proponent of ending this gas-powered leaf blowers. They, you know, emit in a half an hour as much carbon emissions as like a Toyota Camry driving like 1,000 miles. So, which, I didn't even know that until about three months ago. I knew they were bad because I can smell it in my neighborhood. So there are ways that we can produce buyback programs so that the burden of that is not on gardeners necessarily, but to facilitate them getting back into something much more efficient.
We can have District, or Charlotte?
So I just want to-
District 6, yeah, sorry.
Councilmember Madison, and then Charlotte, just so that we have all the district candidates.
Well, I think if you look at our Climate Action Plan, there are certainly a number of different metrics that are tracked. I think many of them are quite specific. So for example, when you look at greenhouse gas emissions, the state has a particular goal that they're mandating by 2030. We aim to exceed that performance. In other words, we want to be at a reduction, and the metric is sort of tied to when the legislation was adopted. It's below 2009 levels. So if you look at what we were doing in greenhouse gas emissions, for example, 2009, the goal, I think the state says 49% below by 2030. Our goal is 60%. Now, whether that goes far enough or not can be debated. But we've done a lot, you know? We've banned the Styrofoam, we've banned the plastic bags. We are looking, actually, and I think the EAC is bringing forward a proposal to move just to electric leaf blowers. But for sure, we can and should do more.
Thank you, District 6 candidates. We'll move on to District 4.
I think there's a real short answer here for me. I've met with city workers for police and fire and corporations and teachers. And it's a sad case that they can't afford to live in the city of Pasadena. And I think it all rolls back to affordable housing. If we could at least work and live in the city that we live in, that it will reduce a lot of what we're having now. And when you talk about accountability, that's where the accountability has to come. We've got to come back to the city that we live in, and we got to work in the city that we live in to reduce all these things that we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
You're good. Okay. We'll go to District 2. Felicia?
So as you mentioned before, I would like to declare a climate emergency. And as part of that, that gives us the impetus to then upgrade our Climate Action Plan. So that is the vehicle that we can do that. And I did, I mentioned some of my hopes and dreams for the Climate Action Plan before. But I think the main one, and you guys mentioned it, you guys are really on this, is to have someone in the city manager's office that is an umbrella over all organizations to coordinate this. If you read our Climate Action Plan, it says transportation is going to do this. Water and power is going to do this. But who's coordinating between all of those entities? So Santa Monica has a sustainability officer. The county has a sustainability officer. I think that we should have one too. And secondly, we should create deadlines. That's what I saw for curbside composting is a big push of mine. And yet, there was no deadline for when we're going to do it. It just said, we're going to try to do it. So I think we need to have deadlines. We need to have accountability. We need to have someone who's monitoring that. And lastly, we need to develop funding and partnerships so that we can actually implement these things. There are a lot of grants out there, so we also need a grant writer with that sustainability officer.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, is it attainable? I don't know. If we're trying to do all this development to bring in affordable housing and new units and all that good stuff like that, obviously, you need the construction vehicles to be able to do that. And definitely, there's ways to mitigate the dust and all that good stuff. But on the accountability, well, you trust the government to count, accountable? You know, most of the times I've seen in this process, our city is giving out false numbers on multiple things because they're trying to get accountability, anywhere from the crime to some other issues too as well. So no, the accountability's got to come from everybody out here and everybody that has to be doing these forms and youth students that are bringing attention to this stuff. We have to rely on that, and we have to rely on everybody to be the person that holds us accountable.
So I think we need to have individually attainable goals so people understand that individual action matters. But as a city, I think we really need to be aspirational. What if we wanted to become a carbon-neutral city? What if we wanted to have a goal to have the largest urban forest in the region or the country? What if we wanted to make sure that we had no unshaded parking lots because we wanted to actually take measurable steps to reduce the urban heat island effect, which is real and has real impacts? Those are all attainable, but they're aspirational too. And I think we should aim for that. And we have some of the best and brightest minds in the city. You've heard Caltech mention tonight. You've heard JPL mention tonight. You've heard Ozzy mention tonight. I mean, Sequoia is here. It's real. It's our next generation of leaders and thinkers in this city. And I think we really need to double down on that and not just look at what we can attain individually, which is super important, but then how we can turn that into the bigger vision for the city.
That concludes all of the questions for this format. Let's thank the panelists and all the candidates.